Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call to order the Newburgh City Council Work Session. Thank you for your patience. We were in another meeting. And I would like to have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted?
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Anything on the consent calendar? Nothing for the consent calendar? Thank you. Anything for the, of the other items that you had any questions on? On the agenda at this time? None appearing? Anything for council business? City manager has one item that he'll be bringing to us.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one thing for council business.
Say again?
I did have one thing for council business.
All right. Anybody else for council business? None appearing? I have a couple items, but nothing pressing. So we have four items for the council business. And with that, if staff is prepared, we will then move on. Well, let me first ask, do you have any questions on the financial statement? Well, we need to thank Matt for a good report then. And with that, Doug, are you going to be carrying the Newburgh housing proposals?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rogers and I will both...
Oh, Mr. Rogers, too?
Mr. Rogers is...
I don't see his sweater.
I was going to say...
Where's his sweater and his slippers?
Tonight, I'm going to be the play-by-play. Mr. Rogers is in color.
I'll do color commentary.
So, thank you, Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So, what I'd like to do this evening, in the time that we have, is we're going to do a little bit of a recap from the discussion at your November meeting. So this actually started back in August, or July, excuse me, where proposals from the Housing Newburgh Group were brought forward. Then we came back in November, had a more detailed discussion. So tonight, just to kind of recap, there were some questions that you asked from the November meeting. So I'm going to give you a verbal response to those questions that you proposed. Mr. Rogers has some additional clarification, some context he would like to provide on the nine proposals. And then the intent is that we would then go into your regular business meeting. And by motion, the council would direct staff, what you would like us to work on, given the priorities. So, with that slight bit of humor...
Verification, if I may. As we're going through this, you would like the council also the tasks, but you'd also like to have them consider the priority order of the tasks?
Correct.
Thank you.
That was my next piece, because the Housing Newburgh Group did put, there's Attachment 2 in your packet, is their ranking or priority of the tasks to undertake for the top nine. And of course, then there's the six things to look forward to into the future as well. So, let me start with the questions that were asked last time. There was a question, do we have a map that shows the lands that are outside of the city that are to be annexed? And yes, we do have a map. We've actually shared that with the Planning Commission. We were working on the R3. There's about 300 acres of land that's outside of the city limits within the existing urban growth boundary that's identified for our R1, R2, and R3 development in the future. And it's scattered around the perimeter. There's stuff up behind the Allison Inn. There's some property up north to south of Bell Road. There's some stuff, at that time, off of North Valley Road that ended up being annexed. There's property off of Chehalis Drive. There's some property off of Spring Brook. And then there's some land down south, south of the bypass and north of the bypass, actually, off of Weatherly, north and south of the bypass. So we do have a map that we've prepared for that. And we've also shared that with the Housing Newburgh Group. There was a question about the cost for having this R3 annexation. And I can say that the Planning Commission has held three meetings now. They've come to consensus about the comprehensive plan language they'd like to propose, as well as the Development Code language, the implementing regulations of the comprehensive plan. And it was brought up that in the process of going through an urban growth boundary expansion, that's a time you would identify your mix of housing types and locations. So your high density, your medium density, and your low density. That's appropriate, that's the key time to be able to do that. And that really doesn't add costs, because we're going through the whole UGB analysis already to figure out transportation and other infrastructure services. In the annexation piece of that, what we've shared with the Planning Commission is that, yes, there is some additional cost. But what we're proposing is that it be right up front. It's in the comp plan and it's in the Development Code. That if you are annexing 15 acres or more of land, that's the large definition they've come up with, and that you need to have some R3 land, where they're at now is some means 10% of the net area, so you get to take out the stream corridors, would be R3. With that, an applicant would have to go through additional analysis, transportation planning rule analysis, water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, not so much on the storm side of the ledger. And we'd also need to look at other master plans we have for different areas that may or may not be covered. So, but we're looking, the intent would be let people know right up front, this is what you're going to have to do, not something that's embedded over in a comprehensive plan what they're not paying attention to, they're looking at the Development Code regulations. On the construction excise tax, is there a definition? Yes. 80% of area median income, so $74,700. This is the Portland MSA, which we are in, for a family of four. And so, there was a PowerPoint slide that Rick provided last time that gave you an idea of what you'd had to have for an income and be able to pay for rent. So, you know, you'd be able to afford a house at $250,000 and your rent and utilities would be just slightly under $1,500 a month. There are other definitions of housing affordability in different provisions of state law as well. Depends on what bill got passed by the legislature at what point in time. Another one on the construction excise tax, is there a cap based on the value? And no, there is not a cap. So, somebody came in and built a $750,000 home. And if you had a construction excise tax at 1%, they would pay 1% on that permit value. If they were building a $250,000 home, it's still 1% of that permit value. And then it also translates over to commercial industrial, 1% on the permit value for those. There were some questions in the slide that we did last time on this kind of unallocated from the bill that authorized the construction excise tax. And it's actually, it's broken into pieces. So there's a portion of it that applies to residential. So there's a 4% admin fee, can look at my notes. There's a 50% stake is used for developer incentives. And then 15% goes to the Housing Community Services Department. That's to the state, which helps fund homeownership programs. And then 35% goes to your local affordable housing program.
This is which?
This is in...
No, this assessment is by whom?
By the city would, the city would impose a tax...
But we would give some to the state?
Yes, by the law.
Thank you.
You have to give some to the state, so they can advance to their program for housing affordability for new homeownership. On the commercial industrial side, again, there's a 4% admin fee. 50% of the funds then go to your housing affordability program. And then, it doesn't speak to the other 50% of what's left. So that's that unallocated amount. So you can interpret it, you can use it for different uses. But if you look at the legislative intent of the bill, it's for affordable housing. There was a question about could we waive the CET? If that was a desire of the council, we would have to put together a program. So it would be dependent upon the direction that you give us, how we would go about doing that. Then there was another one about kind of peer review. And in the process, well, part of that peer review has been the Housing Newburgh Group itself. You know, they spent a year talking through, looking at a lot of different options before they came up with the nine proposals that are before you. And then, there was another question about community discussion about, and an example about taller structures, because we've mentioned that before. And that was brought up in the Housing Newburgh Group. Has it gone outside of that group of 38 individuals? I think there's probably been some discussion, but has it been pushed out to have a broader community discussion about those kind of alternatives? No, that has not happened yet. But increasing structure height is not one of the specific proposals that came out of the Housing Newburgh Group. There was a question about if there's a kosher kitchen in a residential home? And I don't know. Don't know the answer to that one. It was a nice try, though. And the last one, I guess there was some information at the LOC conference. And I wasn't at that conference, but I can always check with Joe or Truman and pick up that information. So that, those were the questions I wrote down from your November 6th discussion overall. If you do go, if you were to go to Attachment 2 in your packet, it, the Housing Newburgh Group did provide recommendations on the hierarchy of their proposals, the priority. And so the first is the annexation in R3. So I think, okay, we're already working on that. That will be going back to the Planning Commission in March for their public hearing and then come forward to the City Council for your review. Construction excise tax was number two. Accessory dwelling units. This is an interesting one. There's already another bill called Senate Bill 1051. And within that, it has a provision about allowing accessory dwelling units within residential land where you have an existing single-family residential structure. So, in that particular bill, there are provisions we already have to implement by July 1st of 2018. The real twist on that one is, what does the definition of allow mean? Because it's not you finding the bill. Because currently, we allow accessory dwelling units in R1, but you have to go through a conditional use process. What the Housing Newburgh Group was proposing is not going through a conditional use process. It's just an outright permitted use. And then there were some other provisions about not having to have separate sewer connections and an additional off-street parking space. So that one, we're already going to start to work on. And you'll get a proposal at your January meeting to initiate a comp plan and Development Code amendment to implement Senate Bill 1051.
That's coming before the council?
Before council on January 2nd.
To move to the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Question, Mayor, on...
Yes, go ahead.
Relevant to the ADUs. Is there anything in that bill that talks about lot size to have an ADU?
No.
So nothing mentioned in there?
Not on lot size. We can have design compatibility standards. That language is in the bill. The next one, the fourth one, is the missing middle housing. So this is, again, duplexes and triplexes on corner lots was part of that proposal. The fifth one was SDC deferrals and loans. This is one where, working with the city engineer, we're talking now about SDCs and so forth. And so part of your discussion direction you give tonight will play into other discussions that we're having with our engineering department about their SDC program. Expedited review and permitting was number six. Number seven was street widths. Eight was work and living spaces. And nine was the housing ombudsman. So that ends me. With that, I will turn it over to Rick.
Counselor Bacon, please.
The street widths and the duplexes, triplexes in the middle, I mean, on the corners, was already passed with the affordable housing...
What happened in that situation is, in the code, you can have a duplex in R1 and R2. But again, it was taking the next step. So if you go further into the code, it says, it doesn't say specifically on a corner lot. It says that for each dwelling unit you have, so a duplex is two dwelling units. So if you did one of those in R1, each lot area has to be 5,000 square feet. So you need a 10,000 square foot lot to put a duplex on it. So if I was a developer, I would look at that and say, well, I have to do that. I'm just going to create two lots. So instead of looking at kind of the shape and the form of a structure, so if you, let's say you build a 2,400 square foot house and it's on a 5,000 square foot lot, you can do that today. If you had a duplex, you may have a 2,400 square foot structure, but it might be broken into two units. So it has the same mass and scale and feel for that residential area. But our code doesn't allow you to do that. So actually, it's a disincentive in the code to do duplexes and triplexes. The same methodology applies to R2, where you have to have 3,000 square feet for each lot. So if I got to have a 6,000 square foot lot and I'm going to build duplex, ah, no, I'll just do two, 3,000 square foot, build a house and sell it.
Continue.
All right. Tonight, just a couple of things, and these came out of recent discussions, but also sort of a way to look at these, I think, a little bit. You know, as Doug mentioned, Housing Newburgh has its own set of priorities or rankings of what we'd like to see. But I'd like to sort of explain a little bit some of the thinking behind them, maybe. And first off, the ones that are specifically code changes that we hope would, you know, get units on the ground fairly quickly are those involving ADUs, duplexes on the corner lots we were just talking about, and then the public street standards. So those are really more code than anything else. The ones that we consider to be developer or builder incentives are construction excise tax, expedited review and permitting, and the SDC deferrals and loans. So those are really perceived as being ways to attempt to influence the market to do something affordable, basically. So, and again, if we can go back to that argument that we had before, that the builders and developers in our group, of which there were five or six, both nonprofit and for-profit developers, came with the notion that they could build a house in today's market for about $290,000. And in that number, could get a fair amount, enough profit, et cetera, to actually make it worth their while. The problem is, the affordability that Doug mentioned, at 80% of median, somebody could afford $250,000 for a purchase. So with that $40,000 gap is really what we're attempting to find a way to fulfill. And because it, that involves money, thus the CET. So back, and then on the CET, I think it was asked either in the last meeting or at least relatively recently, is, you know, what experience do other communities have with it? There's a list in your, in the original Housing Newburgh thing of the communities that have now adopted construction excise tax. The one that has been in place longest is Bend. That was in 2006 it was passed. And in a presentation that was given to the Affordable Housing Group in Washington County about a month and a half ago, the head of their affordable housing program, Jim Long, gave a presentation that stated what the impact has been since 2006. Now first, remember Bend's population since, oh, 2010 has grown 15,000 up to 91,000. They were at, in 1990, at 23,000. But anyway, in the time since 2006, they funded 770 units. So to put that in perspective, that's 100 more units than all of the...
Verification.
Sorry, yes, sir.
Who has funded it?
Oh, okay. So the construction excise tax went to Bend's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, much like the trust fund that we have in place. And then through incentives to developers, that's how they funded it. So, 770 units, and they've capitalized at least $7 million and lent out about $14 million from their revolving fund.
Officer Murray?
Sir.
One of the things I didn't see, again, is, and I forgot to ask you this earlier, what is the time period for the 1%? So that you build a new home, the example, you build the 3/4 of a million dollar home, you get that 1%.
Right.
How long does that last for?
One time.
It's a one-time fee? It's a one-time fee. It's not 1% on property tax?
1% of the permit value at the time of issuance of the building permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, for instance, the school district has a similar construction excise tax now that they assess as well. So it's the same idea. So then, you know, the other part of this is, you know, when you have city funds, and I know this from experience, when we could say, hey, the city is going to waive fees to the tune of $80,000 for Habitat's new Restore, that looks really good to grantors. Because then they know the city participation, nonprofit participation, et cetera. So that private-public partnership. So in Bend, well, first off, they anticipate another 120 units to come online this year because of this fund. And they say, and Jim Long said, that the quote is, "Per direct testimony from developers, the majority of these units would not have been funded without the city of Bend's housing fund assistance." So, so that's the impact. And then the other question, or the other, the impact is the leveraging portion. So as I said, if we could, if you could go to a state or federal source and say, hey, the city is, will, has done this, are willing to put in this, and then match it. In Bend, the affordable housing fee has leveraged over $77.6 million in state and federal funds and over $40.8 million in private equity. So again, you know, using the example of the Habitat Restore, you know, 80,000 ended up generating over $900,000 here in town. So that's, I think, the same thing that we could expect to come from, from this kind of thing. The other, the other thing I will say is, and I'll underscore that again, we did, we do have private for-profit developers in our group. Many of the names you know. And they, I think, understand that it really is an incentive to developers to build a certain type of housing, entry level, smaller cottage size, whatever that may be. And that there would be some incentive for them to do that. So, there it is. That's what I've got for intro.
Question, if I may, on your number three item here, your ADUs. Does that area or number four, do either one of those take in the cottage concept?
No, thank you. So this is where we have an opportunity to kind of quickly run through the nine proposals again to refresh you, or we can just open it up for questions you may have, what you've read in your packet from our discussion in November.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to have him run through the proposals.
Fine.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I don't know that these are going to be in the, in the same order, but...
They are.
They are? All right.
Just got to get the slides to go. Are they going to be in your priority order or in the...
In the original.
In the original order.
Presentation order, yeah.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay. All right. So annexations, as you'll remember, that's the difference, the definition of large. And some, as Doug mentioned, the City Council has done yeoman's work to get through that. And I think there should be a public hearing...
March.
March. And then that is likely to come back to you all. So they have reached some consensus, which is encouraging.
This is on annexation?
Anexations. Anexations. Okay. And again, as, the next, accessory dwelling units. And these, as Doug mentioned, they're currently a permitted use in R2, but are not in R1. And actually, even though we had hoped, you know, this was back 2009 as it says, that we would see these things popping up like mushrooms. We haven't seen them at all, really. It's been very slow to materialize. I think actually, one of the Housing Newburgh members, Jody, was, did this through the process. So this is, again, a way we hope to get units on the ground fairly quickly.
Let me back up just a minute. I'll catch you in just a moment. You say it is permitted in...
R2.
R2, but not R3?
Conditional use in R1.
And conditional in R1?
Right.
Nothing in 3?
No.
Is that right?
You could, but usually R3s, we're seeing apartment, apartment developments. So you're already getting units in the range of 500 to 1,100 square feet.
Thank you. Captain Johnson?
And I had a question, mostly for Doug. Ben, and thank you for meeting with me, Rick. I appreciate your taking the time to kind of run through these with me. Great information. As I was chewing on this, I was thinking about livability in Newburgh. And as we build new neighborhoods with potentially narrower streets, is there some way to limit ADUs on those narrower streets? I'm just simply thinking of parking and access and congestion. You know, I totally can see the benefit of ADUs, as long as you have the infrastructure. I just, in my mind's eye, I had, you know, a zillion cars and nowhere for to put them. And the pedestrian issues and those things. I was just hoping that if there's a way in the code to kind of say, hey, you have street widths or X, I don't know. It was just a concern that popped in my head.
Well, Doug, this is Doug Rux again. So, one of the things that we've talked with the Housing Newburgh Group about is, narrower streets opens up the transportation system plan. So that's a, we spent five years to get it done, get it adopted last December, a year ago. This meeting, actually. And so that's going back and reopening that. And so they would take financial resources, staff resources, a lot of discussion of how it works. So I don't have a specific how it would work yet. The other piece of this is the Planning Commission. We've been working with them on the issues of parking in residential development, which includes accessory dwelling units. That project was put on hold, giving our staffing runs a moment. But we've done a lot of work on that already. The Planning Commission had gotten to the point to say, what we don't have is a parking problem in R1, because we already require two off-street parking spaces. And a lot of people do that in front of their garage and fill up their garage with stuff. Where we run into the challenges is in R2, especially on 3,000 square foot lots and specifically on cul-de-sacs. If you've got a linear street, you can space the driveways in such a way that you can make some on-street parking spaces, really those cul-de-sacs. But then again, then this other piece on ADUs is, do you really need to have an additional off-street parking space for that accessory dwelling unit? If there's adequate on-street parking? Again, we haven't dove way down in that one yet, but that's something that's on our list to take a look at. Because often what happens, is people look at it as, the space that's in the street that's in front of my house is my parking space. It's actually, it belongs to the public, and the public can use that space. But we also know we have situations where we have families where there may only be two people, one or two, and we may have a situation where we have four or five, and the kids are all of driving age. And so now we've got four or five, six vehicles there. So there's all of those dynamics we have to take a look at and really get into it with the Planning Commission, get into it and analyze it, what's workable and what's not.
Counselor Anderson?
I talked with Rick a little bit about this last week. And as I understand it, in the plan, is some money for staffing at some point, or just money for the city. And I thought it was like $200,000 or something, and that way we could hire somebody to help do all this. My concern is, I see a whole bunch of work here. And one of the things I wouldn't want to have happen is what happened the last time, which is, we went through it and passed it, and then we found some and large, all those definitions. And then there was other things that came up like, well, then you got to, you're going to do it in R3, then you're going to have to do an extra study that was going to cost an additional $50,000. I'm just hoping that when I look at this and I see, like, for instance, R2 is a permitted use, but R only allowed is conditional use, and then, and low-density residential R1 zones. And development, this type of housing has been slow to materialize since the regulations relaxed in 2009. So have we, I guess my issue, my issue gets to be, is, when we go through this, have we set it up with the developers to find out what, what issues they have? Would be, you know, okay, you've got these new issues, but have the, will the developers actually do it? Is it something that they will look at and say, yeah, this is doable, and sure, money, I'll do it? But that's the thing that I don't know if we've taken that step. And when we get into it, this is a lot of work for staff, it seems. And I want to make sure that we have, they have the time to do it. So that's the, you know, we need to hear from staff about, okay, this is an awful lot of work. You want us to do it, council, we'll do it. But, you know, I know it's in our top 10, or how many, 12 priorities to do this. So it's something you'll probably want to do. But I'm just worried about with everything else going on right now, will we be able to do this?
Well, council, Doug Rux again, is, housing affordability is one of your council priorities. And all of this discussion fits underneath the housing affordability. It then gets to the question of staff time and resources to be able to go through. And I've candidly, I've told Rick, I said, I can't do all nine in six months. Originally, it was proposed, it's impossible to do. So it's what are the top, based on the council, what are your top priorities? And then I have to go back and work that in. And then I have to go back and work that in to the other work programs that we have, given the council priorities, and the current planning cases that are kind of in. Because I know, as I mentioned earlier, I got Senate Bill 1051, I've got it implemented. If you want to go down the construction excise tax, there's other provisions about housing affordability that are part of that bill, and ORS 197 as well, that would have to be implemented, because part of the funding goes back, visibly relates back to affordable And then, the other piece of this, but we'll get to the piece about money, is your Affordable Housing Commission was established by resolution to be the group that provides recommendations to the council on the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So it's very prescribed about what their role is. Using the CET provides a cash infusion that can go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But I think and believe that we would have to go back and rework how that group, that commission was established, because it was not by ordinance, it was by resolution, planning commission, traffic safety, and so forth, were all done by ordinance. We'll probably have to go back and actually embed that, and then modify the scope of their responsibilities. To your piece on money, funding available, remember, 4% of the construction excise tax can go towards administration of that program. So when you add, that comes to about $16,000 a year, that does not pay for a position to administer the Affordable Housing Program. So then it becomes a discussion as part of the budget process, about funding allocations against all of the other needs within the city, about where do you apply your financial resources, based upon your council priorities and your community initiatives. So there's not a magic, by creating $400,000 a year doesn't mean we get to use that and not go hire somebody to prescribe, to start to leverage with developers to create affordable housing units, not money to administer a program.
Yeah, although I think, this is Rick Rogers, I, you know, I think there are very prescribed amounts of that money in the legislation that needs to go to developer incentives. And then the other part that goes to the state is actually for down payment assistance for the purchase of affordable homes, that's what it's actually used for. But I believe we should research the legislation further to find out what the second half of the money can be used for, because I, I think as it's written, it says something to the effect of, to promote or encourage affordable housing programs. Now, I would argue that that means the administration of said program as well, but I think that would, would be part of this research, if you wanted to pursue CET further, that would be part of the discussion.
Counselor McKenney? Counselor Johnson?
I was particularly encouraged by the testimony that you just entered into the record. Can't do all mine. In our conversations, Rick, even this last week, and probably other conversations here, we need to concentrate on the items that are doable, and have a reasonable measure of success to be able to do that, and to launch into those as rapidly as possible, so that, you know, inch by inch, maybe it's a cinch there, but you're not in a position to deal with all mine at this particular point in time. So it's going to be real important for somebody to crystallize, what are the one, two, or three items that we can launch into right away, and, and have a measurable success with those? And we're going to have to rely upon you being able to tell us, what are you able to administrate, what are we able to coalesce around and, and accomplish there, so that we can actually see some tangible progress with what these people spent almost a year dreaming about and trying to put together here? So, thank you for entering that into the testimony. Now how can we channel your admonitions to us into making sure that, Rick, these are the one, two, or three, or four, or five things that we can have a measurable success in to, to make a difference?
Counselor Doug Rox again, from staff's perspective on this, and I have not talked with Rick about this, uh-oh. No, this is mine, is, we are on the Housing Newburgh priorities, annexations, R3, we're already doing that. So that should be getting in front of the council by April, May timeframe. We've been working on that for a good six months plus already. The construction excise tax, number two on their list, that's not currently in our work program. The ADUs, I mentioned, we're already going to have to address that as part of Senate Bill 1051, and that has to be in place by July 1st, 2018. So that's six and a half months from now.
All right. All right.
That has, that has a possibility of interrupting our present methodology, our present code, or whatever it is, you know, we've spent, what, five years codifying that? Did I hear you say that we have to be careful not to interfere with that right now, or what?
No, on the accessory dwelling units, and so, you know, this came back, this came up in 2009, so here we are now at the end of 2017, and we've looked at the regulations, and say, well, we're not getting the accessory dwelling units that was anticipated or hoped for. The legislature's now come with a bill that says that accessory dwelling units are now allowed in all residential zones where there's an existing single-family home. So what we have in our code is kind of a split system. In R1, it says conditional use. Some could make the case, well, that's allowing it, we just have to go through this extra process. In R2, we allow it. What Housing Newburgh has proposed is get rid of the conditional use process in R1, just make it permitted use. But we have, there's other elements of the development code we have to look at, so that requires a development code amendment. And every time we do a development code amendment, we also need to go back and make sure we've got the right policies in place in the comprehensive plan. So the fourth one in this is this missing little housing. And we've talked about this before.
Fourth one, which list?
This is on their Housing Newburgh priorities.
On the priority list? I've got two lists here.
Yep. Is the missing middle housing, is that attempt to try to have these mixed neighborhoods. So when we went through the urban growth boundary process and did survey work with the citizens, and we asked them about, what do you think about missing middle housing? They had a graphic to show them. People came back, those who responded, a little over 100, in that survey said, we like to have a mix of housing types in our neighborhoods. So, it could be accessory dwelling units, it could be duplexes, it could be triplexes, it could be apartments, it could be detached, traditional single-family homes, it could be cottage development, you know, 700, 600, 1,100 square foot homes, trying to have that mix. It also brings a mixed income component into the neighborhood, so it's not all homogeneous, the homes all about the same square footage, and all about the same income level, and so forth, and so you could mix that, that together. That one would require a development code amendment, to be able to implement that. And we know that when we go through a development code amendment, you know, it's a four to six month process to get through. I'm just going to stop at number five.
I have Captain Johnson over here.
Oh, sorry, I just want to rewind just a little bit.
Okay.
You mentioned, talking about staffing, and the amount of revenue that would be allowed through the CET and other channels for an additional person? Now, did you say 16,000 with the 4%? Is that what you said? Okay. And then my, my question would be, on the presentation we got last meeting on this, of the balanced rates from commercial and industrial development, there's 50% that is unrestricted, and that would be about 96,000?
Correct.
So, would you feel uncomfortable using that to fund a per, I'm just asking as a staff person, because that would equal about 112?
That might be a possibility, counselor. Again, I think, as, as Rick had indicated, it's going back and looking at some of the provisions in the bill, because I reread it again over the weekend, and looked at it, and when it gets to that 4% for admin, on commercial and industrial, 4% for admin, then of that 100%, 50% for affordable housing programs, and then it, the legislation, the language just stops. It doesn't say anything about what you do with the other 50%.
Okay.
But again, that's where I said, it ties back to, what was the purpose of that whole bill in 2016? It was for affordable housing.
So we'd probably, follow along?
Follow along.
So we'd probably need some sort of legal opinion to make sure that that was okay to fund a person maybe dedicated to affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. That was all.
So the fifth one was on this SDC deferrals and loans. And this one, as I mentioned, is that in conversations we're having with the city engineer when they're looking at their SDC program, and the methodology, I'm going to really simplify this, SDCs are like a zero-sum game.
Say again?
SDCs are like a zero-sum game. So it costs so much for new infrastructure to go in. If you are waiving an SDC fee, you still have the infrastructure cost that's there. So it affects the SDCs you charge on everything else to make up that, that delta, that difference between the two. If you're deferring SDCs by some period, by, at the time of sale, if it's deferred for one year, it affects the income stream that goes into our SDC funds in order to do our capital projects. So it has a trickle-down effect of what we might have identified as a project in two years, if something gets deferred, it may have to be pushed out to year three, in order to have adequate funding to do that capital project that is funded by SDCs. So those are what I see as the top five. Now, of those top five, again, two are already being worked on. The other three, it may be, you know, within a year or a year and a half, you might be able to get those top five taken care of. So you might want to think about is, maybe this is like a stair step. We can identify our top three, four, or five over one and a half fiscal years, essentially, and then, you know, you've got your list, and then it's time to kind of step back and revisit that again, and say, okay, we've accomplished this, this is what's not accomplished, what are your priorities now? Because you can't eat the elephant all at once, you have to eat it a bite at a time.
And if I could just follow on the, you know, the other, with that, the one that is tied, of course, into all, to many of the others, is the CET. Because a lot of these incentives, if there's no money tied to them, if you can't replenish, as Doug said, the SDC fees that you're deferring, then, we understand the city just can't keep giving money away, you know, you can't just waive or defer fees forever. So we need, there needs to be a source of that income. And I, and I do believe that the legislation is such that if, if someone was needed, say for the expedited review and permitting, if, if someone was needed as a consultant to come in and work through those for the city, I think this money would pay for that. And so, but I think, again, unfortunately, things come down to money at some point, and if there's true incentives, that's, that's the CET, so.
Continue.
So we've been talking a bit about the construction excise tax.
And on the CET, one, one point of clarification here on this, the legislation allows up to 1%, is what it is. So any, any derivative up to 1%, so do keep that in mind. Actually, in Bend, it was 1/3 of 1%. But, the only caution to that is, remember, when we're using 1% at, you know, 40 million valuation, and permit valuation, that's yielding about $400,000. You know, in Bend, where they were growing in population, the building was going out, that, that makes a significant difference, 1/3 versus 1%. So keep that in mind. And these are the things, as we said, that could be used. In fact, one of, one of our members was, was very interested in the citywide bond campaign, and again, then we'll get into compression discussions and all that, but anyway, specifically to fund something for affordable housing. But again, these are ideas that, that could be, could be used.
So this is the ombudsman component of this, promoting the programs. And so what we have now is essentially staff out of community development, plus our Affordable Housing Commission, who are the ones who are promoting, promoting the affordable housing component, or aspects within the community as a whole. But one of the big things that the group discussed over the course of the year is, it's educating the public about housing affordability, because a lot of people are just not aware, aware of it. They're here, they own a home, they get up, and they, on a frequent basis, you know, 6,500 people plus, get up every morning and drive away, and go someplace else to go to work. And then they come home at night, and then when they get home, they've got family obligations, and they're doing that. And so, they don't necessarily see this issue that's sitting out there. Remember, the other part of this, we have a policy in our comp plan, is to distribute housing throughout the community, so it doesn't congregate in one area of the community.
Doug, let me ask a couple, three questions, if I may, because we're getting short on time. And follow up to what Counselor McKenney was telling me about, can you identify what, what I would call low-hanging fruit in here?
I would say the low-hanging fruit would be two pieces immediately. That's the annexation, and the R3, and the ADUs.
So you, you see this as low-hanging?
Annexation and R3, and accessory dwelling units.
And I'll add CET.
And you'll add?
Well...
No, I, thank you, I'm getting double answers here. Now, the converse, which do you see that really are long-term processes? That are not going to happen like an overnight? One of those, I think you mentioned earlier, was number seven.
Number seven, the street whiffs would take time, and I think number eight would take some time as well, because number eight is using the Housing Trust Fund as the funding source, to hire a consultant to do an evaluation on building or buildings, on their feasibility to be used as this kind of living artist workspace component. But again, remember that what the funds that are in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund right now, is just a little over $60,000. That's all we have. We started with 75. And we spent down a little bit of that through some grants, and just a bit, basically, just grants, that we've done a couple of grants.
And my last question is, of, of this, these nine items, which one or ones, or are there any, that you see have, in our discussion that we've had so far, that there are some unintended consequences that you've not already identified?
Well, the, the discussion, I think, and with talking with counselors and others, you know, not, not to beat a dead horse, but the CET, just by its unfortunate name of tax, could get some pushback. And there's been reaction already that the fees in Newburgh are, are high enough. And there's a slide in your packet that talks about the relative level of the fees here. But again, I'd like to underscore that it is an incentive, and so it's really to try to promote the market to move in a certain direction.
Any others? No others?
Well, no, long-term, number nine, I mean, that's something that's long-term, because you're always doing it. You're doing it immediately, and you're doing it five years from now, 10 years from now. So it cuts both sides.
Yeah. Now, can I turn the question around a little bit, if that's all right?
You're not asking me a question?
No, no. I'm just, I, well, no, general, a rhetorical question. Okay, so the, the other question, the other thing to look at is, so, as Doug said, some of these are already underway. ADUs is underway, annexations are underway. Annexations, to be honest, probably won't have a whole lot of impact, to be honest with you, I don't see a lot of big annexations coming in in the near term. ADUs, hopefully so. But the ones that, in my opinion, and probably the opinion of Housing Newburgh, that have the potential for most impact, now that's the other way to look, is definitely probably expedited review and permitting. Getting to the head of the line means everything to a developer. SDC deferrals and loans as well, and, and both of those cost money. So, thus CET. So those are the ones with the most impact, and I think, you know, you have, a best example is Bend, and 770 units is pretty darn impressive, so, there it is.
Counselor Bacon, Counselor Harrison?
I just want to, I was just at an economic development meeting earlier in the week, or last week, the has, the housing challenges that we face, it's not only housing challenges, it's, it's economic development challenges, because businesses aren't going to move here if their employee, if they can't find someplace for their employees to live. I remember probably eight years ago, or 10 years ago, people were talking about, we couldn't bring execs here, because we didn't have exec housing. Now that's all we're building, but what about the worker? And, and it is a problem all over Oregon, and if we don't, if we don't understand that a, a company's not going to come here, if they need 30 employees, and there's nowhere for those 30 employees to live, they're going to go somewhere else. they're going to go somewhere else. It's too big of a problem.
Right, and again, not to, not to, again, beat the proverbial horse, but there are nine other communities in the state that have already adopted construction excise tax. So, we are competing on a state, national, regional level. So, if, if we don't offer those incentives that the other nine communities, plus there's another five others that are considering it right now. This was as of October, there were nine. I think, that's right, I think, as you said, Councilor Bacon, that, that a community could find, a business could find another place to go.
Want to follow on to that?
Follow on?
I was on the phone with Tillamook. And Tillamook has to, they're, the school, the cheese factory, and the hospital are considering building their own housing because they can't get qualified people to come in and work. They, they, they hire them, and they don't come because there's nowhere to live. So, and we're close to that.
Councilor Hesse?
Yeah, on this, one priority, housing ombudsman. Is that a spendy, I mean, we have to hire that person? And is that something that we probably don't have the budget for anywhere?
That's me. It's a role I'm already doing.
Grant?
We're, we're just figuring. A title and a promotion would be what he needs.
You're already that guy.
I'm already that person.
All right.
You want to wrap it up, please?
So, you've had several opportunities to have a discussion. You had some Q and A at your November meeting, and you had Q and A this evening. So, the next step of this is when we get into your business session, it's on your agenda. I'll come back. If there's some additional follow-up questions you have, we'll be here to answer those. Hope is that you would come up and give by motion the direction of what you want staff to work on as the way you understand the playing field of these nine proposals.
Any final questions or comments for staff at this time, and our guests? Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything for the come before us in work session? None appearing. We're adjourned in work session, we'll reconvene at approximately 7:15, or maybe slightly before. This is the, council needs a little break to unwind for just a moment.
So, go to YouTube, and then when it's done playing, you need to tell me when you're ready to advance because then I have to click again like over on the side. So, you can reset the timer. So, they do work, and Ian and I tested.
Yeah, and they're...
And they play, and they're loud enough and all that. But it's just while it's playing, it basically leads along, goes to YouTube. It'll play until the end, and then you won't be able to advance it until I click over like on the side up there. And the same with the second one, when you're ready to start playing, and you've just got to give me a motion or say stop playing. Okay?
Can I want to say this, please? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call for the Newburgh City Capital Business Session for December 18, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, all present, will you note it?
Rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. This year has brought to my attention something that I think I would like to start. Maybe it continues on, maybe it doesn't. But this is what I'm going to call the Mayor's Memorial for 2017. And as this year draws to a close, I think it's important for us to take note of the passing of, of two individuals who devoted countless hours on behalf of the city government. And these two served as mayor of, of the city. And, as you know, a position that requires devotion to the citizens and to the organization that provides their services. Democracy works when individuals step up to serve by shining a light for others to follow. Through their, though their lights have gone out, these former mayors have a legacy that lives on. Former mayor, Newburgh Mayor Darrell Ballinger passed away in February. Darrell Ballinger was the 38th member of the Newburgh, of Newburgh from 2000, from 1967 to 1970. He became interested in Newburgh politics in the mid-'60s when he fought forodation of the public water system. While mayor, he worked on adding to the water supply for the city. He also initiated actions during his tenure that led to the construction of the sewer treatment plant. Former Mayor Donna Proctor passed away in September. Donna was the 41st mayor of Newburgh from 1993 to 1998. During her tenure in office, the city had a significant fire at, at City Hall. This led to several years of remodeling, reconstruction work of the historic City Hall and construction of a new public safety facility for the police and fire. As mayor, she oversaw a period of growth in the city as it has evolved. With that, and with a recognition of the disaster we're hearing about, of the derailment of a train in the Tacoma area, I would ask if we would have just a moment of silence in remembrance of those people. Thank you. City Manager report, please.
Mayor and Council, Johann, your city manager. So, pretty busy last two weeks. I don't know that this place ever gets unbusy, but several things. And an email to you is the summary of this, as did the press get it. So, I'll highlight a, a few things. First was the inaugural meeting with Councilor Murray to the Cultural District Board. And I see, if he didn't leave, that the CPRD director is here. Where the Cultural District Board includes the city, cultural center, and, and CPRD. And they look at the master plan that we have on that area and next steps. So, this is under the citizen chair of Robert Suppy there, started talking about what is the next thing that we want to work on to improve the district. So, I think you'll, Doug has brought up earlier and shown what this cultural district master plan is. Now, we're going to take the next step with the Cultural District Board and with Councilor Murray on there. And Leah Griffith, our library director, who also sits on that, the next project. And it'll be primarily, I believe, in the outside area, not inside the, the cultural center. We discussed over the last week or so, next step in the TVFNR annexation. And tomorrow night, I'll be at the Washington County Commission meeting. This is the second of two required hearings where the commission will hear if there's any objections to the annexation itself, and whether there could be a request for an election, which is, under the law, provides for that. And they will vote tomorrow night of approving the annexation or if they go to next step of, of requesting an election. Attended Lodging Tax Committee. The Lodging Tax Committee, again, talk about council priorities and council work. It's, it's Doug Rux is responsible for that. And they've just now completed, and you'll get shortly, the recommendation on the large grants. And I believe, if you tell six applications for the small, and six applications for the small grant program. That's the 20,000 set aside for marketing and special events. They'll begin to vet that, and that will also come back. As will some recommendations from a subcommittee, marketing subcommittee, to go to the full committee to come to you. So, very active on that. Attended the annual Police Awards Dinner on Saturday, just along with Councilor Bacon and Council Murray there. And, and a lot of people, you know, almost 100 people that showed up. celebrate, and also honor their employees. It's appropriate to have a center here. We think it's appropriate to modify the fixed routes slightly so that we include using just existing buses, so not asking the county for more, but to cover all of the four major areas of the city, up to the senior center and then coming back to the transit that will allow for transfers, up to the county's largest employer, ADEC, which right now is not served, but having a bus that goes up to basically George Fox, Allison, ADEC, Pool, and then comes back to a transit center. Then another one that goes to an area that right now is really not being served, the whole area, which is going down Ewing Young Park, Rogers Landing, waterfront, over to River, Wynewski, some of that, coming back to the transit center with a stop at Edwards. And then the final one that would go again from the transit center and go out to the pool, and then out to Safeway, Fred Meyer, Providence, PCC, and then back. So that proposal is floating so far, talking staff to staff, including Cynthia Thompson who was here, and with two of the commissioners, they think that they're looking at a proposal favorable. So we'll continue to work through Councilor Essen to that committee, and we'll bring it back also to council. There's a lot of other things going on, and for whatever it's worth, I'm also on that list for jury duty, doing my service and all that. So we're, I'm holding my fingers crossed that I don't have, I love to serve, but hopefully not just at this time. We also are going through on the process with the camellia. You know, that's being registered on a national registry. It takes about up to three years. We're in the first year. The flower has bloomed. We have it, we have the pictures of it, and we're going through the certification process. Mr. Mayor.
Any comments or questions for the city manager? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Now to the consent calendar. Councilor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? None appearing, and do I hear a call for the question? Question has been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Consent calendar is adopted. And with that, we will now move into the area of public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, we have one signed up for public comment.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I stepped right over the top of that. My apology, and we do have the public comments, and we have one individual that signed up that wants to speak to us. I remind the party that we like to have you keep your remarks to a five-minute timeframe. So with that, I'm going to invite Mr. Herbert Kahn. My apology that I stepped right over the top of that. I'm not going to go there. The button on the right, silver button on the right, that's on the top, and your name, and that's all you need.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Herb Kuhn. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to talk about the Newburgh Animal Shelter. I understand the city has discussed selling that property, and that concerns me greatly. We have lived in Newburgh area for 27 years, and have had the pleasure of seeing Darlin Adamans and a number of followers go to great lengths and great efforts to raise money to build this animal shelter. My wife and I got our dog from the shelter about four years ago, and were very impressed with the cleanliness of the facility and the caring compassionate nature of the volunteers that worked there. I think this is an operation of which the city of Newburgh could be proud. I ask that you don't let short-term budget concerns obscure the long-term impact of losing this facility and the service it provides. It is rather ironic that on the one hand, this council has commended the volunteers who operate the shelter for their tireless efforts in fundraising to reach their goal, which was a true no-cal shelter, but is now considering actions that could easily disback to the old options, which is euthanasia or dying in the street. I ask you to please recognize this is not just an animal shelter. It also demonstrates the city of Newburgh has a heart, and that the city places a high value on the efforts of its citizens and the community in making improvements. Thank you for hearing me.
Any questions or comments from each of you? Councilor Bacon?
No matter what, there will be an animal shelter. We understand that people donated to the animal shelter. It's unfortunate that now we need someone who can handle the operation themselves to take over the animal shelter. The city of Newburgh cannot be a landlord to them any longer. So if it does go up for sale, it will be, it will always remain an animal shelter if I have anything to do with it. I promise. Because I, if you knew me, I have more pictures of my dogs on my phone than my grandkids. Okay. So I will always fight to make sure that there is an animal shelter there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Now we'll move into the area of public hearings, and we have a couple of administrative hearings. The first one is dealing with a resolution authorizing the city manager to waive the competitive solicitation requirement and authorizing the request of a proposal for installation of an onsite hydrochloride generation system at the water treatment facility from Whitney Equipment Company Incorporated, the supplier of the microchloro system referenced in Resolution 2017 3403. With that, I'm calling if there are any abstentions or conflicts of interest from the members of the council. None appearing? Staff report, please.
Good evening. I'm Brett Music, Senior Engineer with the city of Newburgh. I'm here representing the Public Works Department in terms of the installation of the replacement hydrochloride generator at the water treatment plant that was resolution asked for. Back in, and what we're asking for is a request for exemption from the competitive bidding, and also a request and authorization to seek a proposal from Whitney Equipment, the vendor or supplier for the hydrochloride generation system that was approved back in September. Back at that time, it was unknown that Whitney Equipment had the capabilities of being the general contractor for the installation, so through the process of, and that came about through the process of reviewing the existing water treatment plant system and the generation system, hydrochloride generator system. And in that review, we identified that the main components of the installation would be the installation of the equipment itself, plus modifications to the plumbing, electrical, and ventilation system, all of which are vendor-driven components. And so in looking at, kind of going forward with the installation, we looked at options for that and what the code allows for, for a waiver of the exempt or the competitive bidding requirement, so that's what we're seeking. And just kind of as a refresher, I know back in September, Dan, the water treatment plant superintendent, had presented what the process is for that, and the hydrochloride generation equipment that is there currently is well past its lifespan, and that consists, that is one of three treatment operations that happens at the water treatment plant. And what this does is creates, basically creates bleach with the use of salt, water, and electricity that goes into the water system to put a disinfection of that system. And basically, kind of in looking at this as well, although it's a little bit more complicated, obviously, it's, we view it as very similar to homeowner or business owner replacing the heating and air conditioning system in their home or business, and hiring and using the same vendor or supplier that they selected for their equipment to actually do the modifications necessary to install that, and it's basically the same space where the previous one was, so.
Any questions or comments from, what, are there savings in going this direction? Did I miss that?
Yeah, the primary savings is in the fact that with going out to the competitive bidding piece of it, there's, a lot of times what happens is there'll be a general contractor that then works with the vendor and gets a subcontractor, so you have the potential to have a third party with all the markups and associated things there, associated with that, to happen in there. So that's what we're seeing in the cost savings on that side of it. The other piece of it is Whitney had done the work with this, being the vendor, and worked with the contractor on installation of the wastewater treatment plant. So they have experience with that, they know they're going to be driving this piece of it. It's really, this particular one is definitely a vendor-driven components because of all the requirements for the equipment come from the manufacturer through the vendor to the contractor that's going to do the actual installation. So that kind of just speeds that, makes more efficiencies in that component of it, as well as just kind of the overall management of the project is simpler with only, basically you're putting the vendor in charge of the whole operation from the arrival of the equipment to actually a final startup and all the pieces of that versus having to manage that.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff right at this time? None appearing? I do not have anybody that has signed up to provide any oral testimony, so I'm going to open and close the oral testimony for you of the administrative hearing. Have we received any written communications from outside?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have not received any written communications for Resolution 2017 3424.
Thank you very much. May I have your closing remarks and your recommendations, please?
Our recommendation is that you approve the resolution before you.
With that, I'm going to close the hearing, and I'm open for deliberations. Resolution 2017 3424, authorizing the city manager to waive the competitive solicitation requirements. Pleasure to the council. Councilor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2017 3424.
It's been moved and seconded, Johnson, to adopt Resolution 2017 3424. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
First off, welcome, and great job on your presentation.
To the motion.
That's it.
You got me on that one. Is there any further discussion? Question has been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing? The resolution passes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Russ Thomas, Superintendent of Public Works Maintenance for the city of Newburgh. What the request is, is for an exemption from the competitive bidding to upgrade our current Cartograph software system. Currently, the city of Newburgh is utilizing Cartograph software for asset and workflow management. Assets are everything that the city owns and that we maintain and take care of. As I've outlined in the request for council action, that can be anything from a street sign to a fire hydrant to an elevator to a police car. We're currently using two separate, or actually three separate, software systems to maintain these assets. We have Facility Dude, which we're currently using to maintain our facilities. We're using Fleet Tracking, which we migrated into Cartograph for the maintenance of the fleet vehicles. And then we're using Cartograph for all of our other assets, for water, sewer, storm, street, that type of information. What I've done is prepared a little bit of a PowerPoint here. We've got a couple of videos in it that will help explain the dynamic capabilities of the Cartograph system. We have currently used Cartograph since 2005. We've done one upgrade in 2011 to the current Navigator system. The Navigator system is currently in a support-only mode, and the intent is for them to sunset the software entirely in the very short term. The new OMS system, Operations Management System, is the next generation for that software, and it gives us much greater capabilities. So with the PowerPoint presentation, to give you a little better background and information on what we have, currently, what you're looking at is our daily work log, and we've been using these for 20, 30 years, to record everything that we do. And what you've got is an example of our record, prior record-keeping, when we had to work on something. This is from 1990, as recent as 1992. You got a drawing, you got what we did, you got who worked on it, and that was all kept in a file cabinet. We used to have about 15 file cabinets in Public Works Maintenance, and every one of these files went into. We currently have about 23,000 assets recorded. So you can imagine the number of files that we had to go through to try and keep track of this, and if we had to go find any information. We still use these paper sheets today, because what we have with our system, our current system, is desktop-based only. And we have to transfer all the information from the field staff into this information. So you can imagine crews are out there working in the field, they got to record everything, got to bring it back down, and then transfer it again back into the software system that we have. A little easier for our fleet maintenance guys, because they're close by, their desktops. But it's still pretty clunky in today's world. Everybody's got a smartphone, everybody has an iPad, they're all very user-intuitive, and it makes working with those very easy. When we did the upgrade, we added additional utility models, modules. We started out working only with street signs because of federal highway administration mandate on retroreflectivity, the aging of America. We moved into the other modules for water, sewer, street, additional parts of street, moved our, migrated our fleet into it, but we continue using paper to put it, write it on paper, and then put it into a computerized system. With that, what you're seeing is an actual screenshot of the desktop that you get to work with. And if you can imagine navigating this, if you don't know which way you're going, sometimes it can be a little bit difficult. What you're seeing here is an asset, a water meter. And the information that we have on it, the amount of work that's done, we have a picture of it, so we know what we're looking at, and are able to understand, you know, somebody coming in, we talk about one thing, and they can put it on there, and they can take a look at it. It also maintains our inventory control. We know how many water meters we have, how many valves we have for water meters, how many repair parts of each individual part, plus pricing. There's a lot of things that we have to backcharge the developer, a contractor, they damage it for the cost of it, and being able to maintain that, and also know if we have an emergency, do we actually have the part on hand to do that. This is currently, as I mentioned before, in a support mode with the approaching sunset of Navigator rapidly approaching. What that means is we'll no longer have any support for it whatsoever. What we got's what we got, and when it breaks, it's broken. And all of our data records that we've collected since 2005 will be, will be still stuck in it. So where we're proposing to go, which way do I point this? It's not advancing. With that, what you're seeing is an actual screenshot of the desktop that you get to work with, and if you can imagine navigating this, if you don't know which way you're going, sometimes it can be a little bit difficult. What you're seeing here is an asset, a water meter, and the information that we have on it, the amount of work that's done, we have a picture of it, so we know what we're looking at, and are able to understand, you know, somebody coming in, we talk about one thing, and they can put it on there and they can, they can take a look at it. It also maintains our inventory control. We know how many water meters we have, how many valves we have for water meters, how many repair parts of each individual part, plus pricing. There's a lot of things that we have to backcharge a developer, a contractor, they damage it for the cost of it, and being able to maintain that, and also know if we have an emergency, do we actually have the part on hand to do that? This is currently, as I mentioned before, in a support mode with the approaching sunset of Navigator rapidly approaching. What that means is we'll no longer have any support for it whatsoever. What we got's what we got, and when it breaks, it's broken. And all of our data records that we've collected since 2005 will be, will be still stuck in it. So where we're proposing to go, which way do I point this in? It's not advancing. So where we propose to go, and I've got a couple videos here, this one gives you a real good idea of what asset management is and the asset management system, and the second one is a little more in-depth on the Cartograph OMS system. So Sue, if you could go ahead and play this one? Oh, which one, which one we going with here? That one? Okay.
They can be anything, and they're worth money, lots of it. Sometimes they need repair. Other times, a clean bill of health. And you always need to know where they are. But for a happy asset, you need to know everything that goes into keeping it that way, all the resources you use, all the work that gets done, and respond quickly if something goes wrong. Cartograph creates technology that makes all these bits and pieces make sense. We call it the data loop. It'll save you time and money. Cartograph, the operations management system everyone will want to use. Cartograph, the operations management system.
As you can see with that one, and before we go into the next one, you can see that it's iPad, smartphone, notepad, desktop-based system. So we can take this in the field, individual workers can take it out there, and we can direct enter the information into it. This next video kind of gives a really four-minute, two days of Cartograph in four minutes, and it will show you all the capabilities, so you really want to watch it, because it's going to go through a whole bunch of screens and show you all the capabilities the system has, and then I've got a few more screenshots to break down some of the ones that you see in.
Can we take a test afterward?
Hmm?
And we're taking a test afterward?
Yes, we are.
Russ, I'm having to reboot PowerPoint.
Oh, okay.
Just a sec, sorry.
While that, while that's going on, sorry, I think I broke that system, too. One of the issues that we've been facing is correct data entry, and a good example is water meters. When we go out and set a water meter, we have to manually enter the meter number, the meter ID, the, all the information on a sheet of paper, take it in and transfer it. And if you've ever written a piece of pa, on a piece of paper out in the field, threes and eights, twos and fives, sixes, they start to look alike, and when you enter a number in, if you enter one wrong number, you get incorrect data. And so you can have multiple data sets about the same thing, because it's been entered incorrectly, and they go back to find it, they don't find it because it's been put in wrong. What this will give us the capability to do is a direct data entry by either scanning codes or direct download and entry into it without any manual errors that's been entered into it. This is, this one here gives you an overview of what the current OMS system capabilities are, and it's pretty dynamic. See if you can get it to work?
I don't want you to say this is wrong.
Yeah.
Saving time and money has never been more important, and day-to-day operations account for over half of total business costs. Operations management has become critical to any business, so we took everything we knew about our customers and our technology and created something better. We wanted to build the absolute best operations management system, so that's what we did. Track resources, maintain assets, intake requests, manage workflow. With Cartograph, your entire enterprise is connected through one unified system. It began with understanding how different people work and discovering ways to make their job easier. We created a user experience that's intuitive for everyone. The system is as effortless as opening a browser. Every control is at your fingertips. Every piece of data can be visualized, and not only does it make sense, it just works. People work with data more efficiently, and they can actually see it, so we put a map on almost every screen. Cartograph displays data spatially with a mapping system you can choose. Use layers and filters to access an amazing amount of detail on any asset or activity. We found out that a system is only as valuable as the information that goes into it. So the interface has been totally rethought to make entered information more accurate and more consistent. View and edit multiple asset types at the same time, compare assets quickly, and understand how they're connected. If you need more information, drill down to that asset detail page and find it, from basic information to advanced analytics. It also manages your everyday resources. You can track pertinent information for each resource. You can filter that information and easily assemble reports. We made the work order process more efficient than ever before. It all starts with tasks. A task is one activity performed on one asset. Track all the resources used for that task and fully grasp how time and money is being spent on individual assets. We learned that productivity increases when people have the right tools. We put Cartograph in the cloud and made it work in real-time on any device, anywhere. It forms itself to your screen to create a seamless user experience. Our persistence technology just remembers. It remembers your settings, it remembers what you were working on. Open a browser and continue right where you left off. Cartograph even integrates with any open 311 system. Requests can be associated with individual assets and locations and instantly flagged for importance. In reports, you get access to your data all in one place. To find your report, search by title or navigate by category. Once you find it, click the report and you're done. It's exactly how pulling reports should be. Simple. Easy to adopt, easy to use. Simple, effective tools for every type of task and every kind of user. That's Cartograph, the operations management system.
Like I said, there's an awful lot of information in a very short video there. As I, as I mentioned, OMS is available for desktop and notepad screens, so it can be used in the office, it can be taken in a portable mode. iPad, again in the field, with an iPad, as everybody knows, you can take pictures, you can record a lot of things, you can scan with an iPad. Not only do we have that, but we have smartphone application with this as well, so anybody with a smartphone can utilize the same system. It also includes what they call YourGov, which is a citizen interface. Citizen sees a sign down, a water leak, a pothole, they can take a picture of it, they can send it, and it creates a work request. We don't have to have our 20 eyes around town constantly looking for these things. We have 24,000 eyes that can report into us. And they don't have to have a smartphone with the app, they can do that on a desktop application with their computer, they can log into the city website and go through that as well, to give us, to give us additional input for that. Notification manager, what that does is gives us the information that comes in, whether it's through another employee, a person in the field, or a citizen that's reporting something, and gives you the information you need behind it. Assets, that's what we're talking about, everything from a water main, water valve, water meter, valve box, all of our assets, and we can locate them, and as mentioned and as everybody's aware, everybody's visually attuned, and when you can see exactly what you're looking for and where it is, it's much easier to digest and pull that out. Asset detail, one of the things is, is people have been around here for a while, know we get fire hydrants hit. How many times has that fire hydrant been hit over the life of that hydrant in that location? Do we need to move it? Are we spending $10,000 to repair it when we can spend five and move it and not have it hit again? And it's understanding that rather than institutional knowledge that you have with somebody that's been around here a long time and says, yeah, I think it's been hit six or seven times. Well, when was the last hit? Don't remember. Work order tracking, we can track everything that's been done. This is valuable not only in our work and scheduling, but it's also valuable in budgeting and coming up with costs. Preventative maintenance, one of the systems that we have available with this is it gives us the ability to do preventative and predictive maintenance. It can tell us when we need to go look at something based on what the data we input in it. Rather than letting it go until it's broken, let's go fix it before it does. As everybody knows, it's cheaper to change your oil than change your engine. The report engines, again, as they had mentioned, you can, you can draw a lot of information out, very useful in preparing budgets, preparing capital projects, knowing what the costs are associated with it. And finally, some of the, I've got a list up here of the application for Cartograph that we're looking at. Currently, we have 10 users can get on this system, and it's very limiting. Everybody in Public Works will have access to this. Finance will have access to this. Planning will have access to this and can pull information out of it, they can take a look at it. Planning needs to take a look at a sewer line for a developer that's, that's working on it. They'll have the information at your fingertips to be able to pull it out. Budgetary, capital improvements, planning, our inventory, what's our inventory worth? We constantly have to do a report on that. Citizen reporting, I think, is one of the biggest components that we're taking a look at, is being able to get the citizens to help us take care of our city. We get a lot of phone calls, we get people that flag us down, but this gives them the ability, they just have to see it, punch a couple buttons, and we know about it. With that, emergency management, everybody's aware of the Carbon Canyon Fire that happened in Colorado a couple years ago, they know about Houston, both communities have Cartograph, they documented every damage, every problem through Cartograph. With that, the work order turned it into FEMA, we're able to do that, but not only that, that helped them with their response. They knew where the problems were because people in the field were reporting it, they didn't have to send someone out to find it. So it's, it's a big key component as we move forward in emergency management. Things we're currently doing, dealing with facilities, fleet, rolling this all into one system that everybody's using rather than multiple systems that we're all dealing with. Wastewater treatment and, and water treatment plants currently will be on this system as well, being able to go into a component, we talked about a hypochlorate generator and installation of that, they'll have the ability to maintain all their equipment on a predictive schedule, being able to know when to work on it before a bearing fails, before a major failure happens, and being able to program that in based on their knowledge, knowing it needs to be greased every 800 hours, well, 600 hours, let's go grease it, to prevent that, which is an ultimate cost saving. The biggest thing is going to be manpower savings as well. Imagine writing on a piece of paper, you've got 10 of those, you've got to take it in the office, and you've got to enter that into the computer. So we've got an individual sitting at a desktop for half hour at the end of the day or 45 minutes, putting what he put in at the end of the day when, in the field, it's two minutes and it's done. You know, it's, it's touch and click. So that's, that's kind of a broad brush overview of what the Cartograph system is, moving up to the OMS with the upgrade to our current system with that. So if there's any other questions concerning that?
We haven't asked any yet.
Oh.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Essam?
Good evening. This looks awesome, so thank you for bringing it forward. I did have one other question for you, that was, I know of someone, me, that had issues with a water line, and your folks came out, they were awesome. They checked my water meter, but then they had to call in or go back to the office to find out what the flow was before. Will this system allow, if somebody calls and says, I think I have a leak, allow them to look at their iPad and see that information, or is that a separate system?
Ultimately, it's, it's, it's two separate things that will ultimately be joined together. We're taking a look at improvements to the water metering system with a fixed base system will give individuals, the residents, the business owners, the ability to go on and take a look at those systems and determine what their water use is, get a meter reading, be able to do it online with that.
Okay. Great. Want to follow on, if I might, Mr. Mayor?
Follow on.
I'm also assuming that since this is their old software that we're using, the transition to whatever data we have in there to this new system will probably be more streamlined, and they'll probably give us more help.
It, it will, and it also, with the familiarity that the current employees currently have utilizing the Cartograph system, it reduces the amount of training and familiarity that needs to be brought into it. You just need to step from paper to notepads, but they're, they're aware of how the system functions and works, and there's less training involved with that.
And one last one, and then I'll be done, I promise.
Continue.
And did, any, did you guys check and see if this was in the range of other programs like this, just to make sure that we're not way out or?
It's, it's within the range, range of cost, is what I'm assuming. It's within the range of cost. The reduction that we realize here is we're not starting from square one, which is what we'd have to do if we made a change. Now, you can import some data and some things, but the investment that we have currently in the Cartograph system since 2005 is another portion that enters into that as we make that decision to move forward. We have the ability, Wilsonville currently has OMS, Hillsborough currently has OMS, Alnoma County has OMS, City of Albany has it, and City of Pendleton just completed conversions to that. So we've had conversations with all of them and what their thoughts were in either a conversion or an upgrade. And it gives us a real good, tight working group of knowledge to be able to draw upon as well.
And as we move into winter, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Counselor Essam, Counselor Bacon?
My, you know, this is, we had this in the City of Stockton, not this particular thing, but something similar, but we had it all, we voted on program, you know, back then. Now, this is, is this an app, or who, who, who's the administrator of this?
The, the city will be the administrator of this. This is for an on-premise deployment of this system. So the system will be resident on here, we have the ability to log on via the, the cloud to this, but it's an on-premise deployment. We pay a support fee and a subscription fee to maintain it and keep it current, and for software support, for additional support features of that training, additional things for everybody. But the city, our IT department and the Public Works Department will be the administrator of our system.
Well, I just want to say that it's an outstanding system, and I keep being amazed when I realize that this is probably as sophisticated a system as we would have had in a city of 300,000, and we're getting it here in our city of 24,000, so you guys continue to amaze me. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Love it. I can, the first slide, when they showed the drawing, I was thinking to myself, if y'all had to work with me, I can't even read my own handwriting five minutes after I write something, so that would be terrible. The cost might seem excessively high to people who don't buy this kind of thing a lot, but I think the savings that you'll see generated from it will be well worth, well worth the cost. I'm just even knowing if you work on a piece of equipment and you realize, well, we've worked on that and it's kind of outlived our, it's time to replace it, we're spending more money than we're making, knowing where the water meters are, no, you know, it, it's fantastic. Thank you for your work in, in finding this.
Thank you. Any other questions on the administrative hearing? We will move to the closing testimony. I have the authority to have the authority to have the communication.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any for Resolution 2017-3416.
Thank you. Let's open the closing remarks. And your closing remarks?
My closing remarks is I think it's a move in the right direction for the community, and I would recommend that the council approve Resolution 2017-3416.
On my closing hearing, we will deliberate, as I mean, deliberate deliberation by much like accordance, they're adopting what is being proposed, which are also concerning or adopting the findings to support that decision. So with that, please, Counselor, that's all.
I move that we approve Resolution 17-3416 and approve the findings that support it.
And moving to the legislative. And moving secondly, let me see if I can remember. To adopt Resolution 2017-3416, changing the findings that lead to resolution planning and planning, to better the bidding, offering the state managers that's due a three-year contract, and now the 221,000, 529,000, and 50,000, so we're just raising the implementation of letting that operating time to 2000, so we're delegating the funding to 2000 to make minor amendments, and put the agreement on the executive scheme to bring in further success. And here is-
I always behave.
The Springbroke, Springbrook Oaks specific plan, and Doug is the staff person.
Thank you, councilmembers. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So what we have tonight is an information report. So this goes back to your 2016 council priorities, when we, you asked us to come forward and evaluate all of these master plans. We have 23 of them, and making sure that they're all linked together and consistent and coordinated with other departments, and most of these coordinations need to occur with our Public Works Department and our, i.e. the Engineering Department, component of that. So tonight is the 1999 Springbrook Oaks specific plan. So I have up on the screen the high-quality graphics that were done in 1999, not like Russ just showed us on the Cartograph system. So the Springbrooks Oaks plan was about 284 acres of land, so north-south here, this is Springbrook Road, Portland Road up here, Fernwood going along on the south side, Corral Creek is, would be off of the screen over here, Providence is located up to the north in this general location, and Argyle is located currently right here. Fred Meyer Complex is here. So this was adopted by ordinance in 1999. It's gone through one change to the plan, and that was in 2006, and it dealt with some area that was kind of in the middle of the specific plan area when there were some modifications done to it. So in your report, it identifies that there were 12 basically principals putting this plan together, and I'm not going to read all 12 of them to you, because I know that you've read them yourself. But a lot of it was just looking at the plan, mix of uses that were going to occur as this plan was implemented over time. So what has occurred is you see single-family, multifamily, you see care-assisted facilities, Brookdale, Astor House, kind of the two prominent ones out here, which are kind of located in the center right here. The single family is down in here, you've got multifamily up in here, the industrial, this was all industrial at one point in time, and it was converted into the specific plan. So you have the golf course that is located here, and then the greens, which is over on the east side of the area itself. Most of this area has been developed, so you can go from a paper version to seeing what it looks like today. So it required that there be two parks, and so you've got White Oak Park here, and Gladys Park was located here. Again, the golf course that's in the center. This is Friends View's Springbrook facility that's located here. So what's left to develop out of the Springbrook Oaks master plan? Well, it's the commercial properties that front on Springbrook, north and south of Hayes. There's the property that's up here, you may remember, this is where Oregon Clinic is developing on three acres, but the balance of this, we are in discussions about development of that for residential development. Portland Community College has their campus, of course, it's on both sides of Worth, but the bypass corridor cuts through here, so there's this area that's left to develop, and a little bit of the parking lot could expand. And then there's some area that's right in here, at the intersection of Providence and Worth, that has some development opportunities as well, that's outside of the bypass corridors. So, so with that, we went back and we looked at other master plans, so it's good to go to my bookshelf and say, okay, I got this one, this one. So the first piece was the transportation system plan. So one of the projects that was identified was the traffic signal here at Hayes and Springbrook, and so as part of the bypass project, this was improved, it now has a fourth leg, so PGE is able to access into their particular facility. The next one is on Hayes Street sidewalks. So there's a sidewalk along the north side now on Hayes Street back to Burl. There's a missing piece of sidewalk that will get improved as commercial development occurs over here in the future. And then, of course, there's the bypass and its corridor, and so there's the $22 million that was allocated through HB 2017 for design, there's the $10.5 million of savings from Phase One that all of the funding entities agreed to put into Phase Two, and that's for strategic right-of-way acquisition. We also then looked at the 2007 ADA Pedestrian Bike Route Improvement Plan, and just a couple of notes there. When that plan was done, there was no sidewalk in this section of Rucher. When PCC came in and developed, they constructed that sidewalk, so that is improved now all the way from 99 down to Fernwood with a sidewalk. Fernwood Road, there was missing sidewalk in here back in 2007, that's now been constructed, so you do have a sidewalk access all the way from Springbrook to Rucher for pedestrian accessibility. The Hayes Street, Providence Drive, there was a piece that was missing, it's since been constructed, so those improvements are in place. We've looked at the Water Master Plan, there's no projects identified in here that would require any updates of this master plan. We're in the process of updating our wastewater master plan, so we'll be looking at that, specifically looking down here at the Fernwood Pump Station. So there's a force main that comes back to Springbrook, but there are gravity lines, one that comes down here, and then there's one that comes just along the edge of the golf course that comes in. So we'll be looking at that pump station to make sure condition as well as capacity, and with what's left to develop in this basin that's served by that, will there need to be upgrades in the future, and then as development occurs, we'll be talking with developers about those upgrades. That concludes my presentation.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Doug? Thank you.
We're going to be discussing the 1993 Northwest Newburg specific plan review. It's in your packet, and Doug, you have permission to proceed?
Thank you, Counselor. Doug Rux again. So this is the 1993 Northwest Newburg specific plan. So again, it was created quite a while ago, so we're back at the paper version. So this is what it looked like. So this is College Street going in the north-south orientation, Mountain View, now down along the southern boundary. This is the Springbrook Properties component of that. So this one was, there were 12 property owners that came together, and it covers about 150 acres of land within this geography. At the time this plan was put together, it was outside of the city limits but within the urban growth boundary. So like the other plan we just reviewed, this one had some principles that were in place, and there were five of those. And one of them was to have some commercial development, and so you can see it was identified here, and then to have some medium-density residential woven into this, and so this is a portion of the development that actually is, has alleys, so the houses face north and south, and the alleys run east-west in this plan. The, one of the changes that did occur to this plan is this area down to the south here. So this is Gale Park right here, and this was the Gale family home and property, is this area became part of the Springbrook Properties master plan in 2007. So when this plan talks about, you know, 514 homes or so to be built in this area, it included this. It'll never develop that many homes because the southern portion became part of a separate master plan in a later date. So this is what it generally looks like now. So this plan also required to have two parks in it. So there's the Tot Lot Park, and then there's the Gale Park that's located here. The properties that are currently to be developed within this plan is up at this northeast corner, and this property actually comes all the way over to Aspen Lane, there's about 15, a little over 15 acres in here, but there's a stream corridor that comes up through the middle of it. There's an open space area identified in this plan that's located here, and this property is owned by Veritas. This is the Warden family and their property that's located here. There's another piece of property that will get redeveloped or infill development that will occur here, and then there's another small piece that could have some infill development down here. So again, like the Springbrook Oaks, this one has been predominantly developed out over the last 27 years. It was estimated originally it would develop out in 10 to 20 years, and so we're now kind of pushing to 30 years, and there's still some property to develop in that area. As we did with the other plan, we looked at our transportation plan. One of the things identified was at Foothills, here is a traffic signal in the future to occur at this location. There's some potential widening of Foothills in the future, basically along this stretch to address, I should say it right there, accommodating bike lanes, which are not on that roadway, but there's also another alternative, we could look at doing sheroes, so you don't have to widen that particular roadway.
Doug, if I may?
Yes.
On that signal on Foothill and College, that still requires coordination with ODOT, right?
That is correct. College is an ODOT facility, so any improvement there will be, have to be coordinated with Another piece in our Water Master Plan, when we updated that, is that there's identified somewhere in this kind of general area is a new booster pump station to serve properties or land that is above 300 feet in elevation. That's identified as a CIP in about 21, 22, 22, 23 kind of timeframe. That would take the booster pump station that's on Ivy Street, and that could be decommissioned at that point in time and moved over to a larger pump station. That Water Master Plan had two, one at this general location, and then one over off of Zimery, over by the Allison, and that booster pump would serve the reservoir that would be up north of Delrod. This one would serve all of these properties that are up here that are higher than 300 feet in elevation. Looking at our 2007 Bike Pet ADA Plan on Foothill, actual improvements to sidewalks are five feet out here. Everything was generally new. Again, back to the transportation system plan, is it didn't have the bike lane component of that, but that's another, we can look at that in different ways in the future. Stormwater Master Plan, no issues were there. Wastewater Master Plan, there's one area right in this location where there's an undersized pipe that's identified in our, excuse me, in our Water Master Plan. There's a six-inch pipe that needs to be upgraded at some point in the future here. Again, as we look at the wastewater master plan and go through that evaluation, we'll look at this area to see if there are any upgrades and modifications that would require us to come back and review this plan. That concludes my presentation.
I had one question. If we put in the bike lanes, does that require us to buy right-of-way?
Yes, because the right-of-way width would not be adequate to accommodate bike lane. You're actually adding, you know, five to six feet for a bike lane, so that would require acquiring right-of-way. So we'd have to very carefully look at all the homes along there, what they got for driveways and setbacks and so forth, because right now there's on-street parking all the way through on Foothills.
And on the north side, there's not very much land between the road and their front porch, so we talking about a bike lane perhaps on the south side of that street?
I think the opportunity there, Counselor, would to go with sheroes, which is sheroing the roadway, and you strike, you put signage on the road, and so you've got cars and bikes using the same space.
Any other questions for Mr. Rux? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you. Housing Newburg proposals. We're asking for an RCA motion on these proposals, and I think we're going to try to come up with some priorities, but I'll leave it up to you at this point.
Thank you, Counselor. Doug Rux again. So as we went through the work session, we've talked about, you've touched this now three times, for the Housing Newburg Group and their nine proposals to address housing affordability. In the work session, we talked about what would be, you know, the top priorities in your packet. You have the priority list from the Housing Newburg Group. The, so really, the task at this point in time is to try to ascertain what would be the priority of the council for staff to work on. In the work session, I had indicated that, right now, as we are today, we don't have the capacity to do all nine. We talked about what priorities may be, and so we're currently working on the R3 annexation, that I'd indicated at work session. That will be coming back to the Planning Commission in March, and should be back to council in April, May timeframe. Senate Bill 1051 passed in the 2017 legislature. One of the components of that is addressing the issue about accessory dwelling units. So right now, ADUs require conditional use in R1, permitted in R2. The Housing Newburg proposal is to allow them outright as a permitted use. We have a provision in our Design and Construction Standards that you have to have a separate sewer connection for a detached accessory dwelling unit. So there's a, suggesting, asking you not to require that, so that would require a change to Design and Construction Standards. You can do water, you can tap into the existing water for the existing house, or you could run a new line, there's a choice there. And the other portion of that was not requiring one additional off-street parking space. Again, if this was, this is one, as we go through Senate Bill 1051, we're going to be looking at a lot of these components that have been brought forward by the Housing Newburg Group. Construction excise tax was number two on their list. Mr. Rogers shared with you what has occurred in Bend, and what they were able to generate, and the number of units that they were able to provide through that program and through that process. We also talked about missing middle housing, and that's the duplexes and the triplexes on corner lots in R1 and R2 zoned areas. We also talked about SDC deferrals and loans. We shared with you doing that, if you, you know, if you waive SDCs, I mentioned it's a zero-sum game, so that increases SDCs on others, because we have to have the financial resources to implement the capital improvement programs that are identified through our SDC funds, or utilizing our SDC funds. Loans, we already, we currently allow individuals to get a loan for their SDCs, so it's not something new, and part of that is making it more known that that possibility to finance is out there. We talked about expedited review and permitting, where it was shared that, you know, time is money, and getting- is money, and getting through on that process as quickly as possible. Street widths, another one of those. Narrowing the street gives you more land to develop, but as I mentioned before in discussions with you, that opens up the transportation system plan, and that's a lot more time and effort to kind of go through that process. The work in living space, the proposal is to use funds out of the, out of what I call Fund 14, which has two components, but it's the economic development portion of that Hire a consultant to do some evaluation on opportunities for that, so I misspoke in the work session, I have to correct myself. And then the Housing Ombudsman, which is the Community Development Director, or designee. So that's kind of a task we already do, and the Housing Commission also helps promote housing affordability within the community. There were the six other areas, those are not on the immediate list, but things to kind of tend to be watched. One of those that we are tracking is the issue of vacation rentals within area. We've talked with the transient lodge lodging tax committee about this, talked with Mr. Rogers about it. We actually put together a map where we have all of our vacation rentals downtown or immediate round downtown, community-wide. And you have a concentration that's occurring from the railroad tracks over to Hess Creek, over to the west side of town, and then down towards the rivers where most of those are occurring, which are in proximity to downtown because it's easily walkable. So at that point, I think I would turn it back over to the council for your discussion, and I'm here to answer questions. Rick is in the audience, and we can always pull him up to answer questions as well.
So, Counselor Johnson?
If the council's ready, I'd like to make a motion. So, I would move that the direct staff, I'm assuming that's how we're going to do this, to continue work on the annexation R3 issue, the, the missing middle, and the ADU requirements. So that'd be three of them. And then also start work on the construction excise tax, and bring us back proposals for all of those things as they come up, so we can start talking about details for each one. I think if we talk about the details tonight, we're going to go down a rabbit hole. I'd like to see us get a proposal back from staff, and then kind of dig into it and look at the specific proposal, and then go from there, kind of like we're doing with the annexation issue, so. That would be my motion.
I have one concern. I have a concern.
Go ahead, Counselor McKinney.
I know that in part of the discussions here, the expedited review and permitting, I have a concern in this area with so many, with the situation in California, with the homes, the burning, and everything else, we're having, we might be having some difficulty with expediting some of the things that we have to deal with. Heard of one particular instance, because my wife works for Friends View. Friends View came with a need that they needed, and they were told they'd be six to eight weeks before they could even talk to somebody here. So in regards to a couple of these things here, I, I know that staff is in a bind, but the expedited review and permitting, I think, is something that's going to be some, have a sense of urgency in regards to continuing the present building needs and inspection needs, and some of the other things that we're currently involved in. I'm open, you know, to discuss with this, but I think that this is, this is something that is already going to demand our attention in regards to accomplishing something. I know that that's number seven on this one particular list here, but Doug, if you have something to share in that regard, I'm open to listen.
Thank you, Counselor. Doug Rux again. I think maybe, so everybody has kind of the same platform to work from, is, in the world of land use, we meet with development entities and do pre-application. What, we start with scoping meetings, which then progress to pre-application meetings, which then leads to an application that's coming in. So this occurs for subdivisions, partitions, multifamily development, commercial, industrial, across the board. Typically, is once an application is brought in to us, once we determine we have a complete application, I mean, we have all of the information requested, not if it's right or if it's wrong, it's just, have they given us anything? It takes about six weeks to eight weeks to get through a review. Depends if it's at the staff level, or if something has to go to the Planning Commission. Then they have to go through a building permit process. And the building permit process, for everything except for simple, single-family, it takes four to six weeks. Simple, single-family, say that one three times really fast. There's actually a state mandate that we have to review those plans and issue them in 10 days. And the simple plan is one that doesn't require engineer drawings and an engineer stamp, is a simple way to put it. So we've got a lot of stuff churning all, all the time that's coming in, it's at various stages, from a scoping meeting to, you've got stuff that's in going through building plan review. The issue that's brought up here for the affordable housing component is that if you're building a project that has an affordable housing component, to be defined, again, because there's different state programs, laws, give different timelines, is expediting the review on those. So those things can happen a couple of different ways. What was proposed by the Housing Newberg Group was you may, we may be able to use funds from the construction excise tax to possibly go out and pay a third-party vendor to do that plan review in a more expedited fashion. In theory, you could do the same thing with the planning side, given that. The other piece of that is actually having some policies in place that would allow to have an expedited process, because we don't have that currently woven into our operational policies. So those are the kind of things that, from my perspective, I will be looking at if we're going down this expedited process. The last piece of that, no matter what, is having staff capacity to go through with all of the current planning activities, as well as dealing with all of the long-range planning activities that we've got going on. And so there's always that balance that occurs between those. I'll stop there.
Mayor Andrews, Counselor Bacon.
Yes, to the motion. What were, what were the, in the priority orders I see them here, what were the ones that you were recommending?
The ADUs, the annexation, the missing middle, and the construction excise tax.
In that order?
No. I, two of those are already in process, so I, I feel like, well, actually, three of them are already in process, so really, construction excise would be only be the new piece of work to be done, so.
So you're saying those four, that's what your motion is?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, they're one, two, three, and four.
Yeah. 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 I was.
No, that's, that was a question. I didn't hear that earlier. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Counselor Bacon. You're good?
If I might. And the reason I didn't put more on the list is because they, they cost money, and so I figured, once we get the construction excise tax money coming in, hopefully, or see how much that would generate, depending on the percentage we decide. Keep in mind, that's new money coming from outside the community, not paid by taxpayers here, but by developers and builders to help give them incentives to build affordable housing. That money could then be used to fund positions, hopefully, or outside, third-party to work on the expedited, because I completely understand Counselor McKinney's concern. I had a DEC project and had to run through the, the Planning Department. They did great work, but it did take a little bit, because they were shorthanded, so.
So as I understand the motion, you picked one and two because they're already in progress. Four, if we, we don't have to do anything with because we already have that person in place, and three is just putting the tax in place. Is that the idea?
Point of order here.
So is, would, would it be actually in that order, one, two, three, and four, or would you just go, how would you place that, that order?
Mr. Budsmann's not in there.
No, the, there's confusion. I have the motion as one, two, three, and five. The missing middle, level housing, not number four.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not doing the tax?
No, we are.
It's one, two, three, skip four, and five.
And five. Okay, gotcha. All right. In that, in that order, then, I'm asking? Okay. So the motion is, is there any further, oh, I see.
What is it?
Well, the motion, let me state the motion, then I'll get Mr. Counsel McKinney to the floor. It sounds like the motion is to set the priorities as item one, two, three, and five. That's the motion. So, and that would be the priority for the final proposal of the Housing Newberg. All right? And so, all right, so then, Counselor McKinney, did you have, you're good? All right. Since that's the motion, do we have a call for the question? All those in favor of, and let me make sure I have this completely correct here, of adopting the final proposal for the Housing Newberg, what are we calling it? Just the Housing Newberg Proposals, is to adopt items annex, one, annexations, and R3 designations. Item two, accessory dwelling units. Item three, construction excise tax. And item five, missing middle level housing. All those in favor? Is that right? One, two, three, and five. We didn't do four. So all those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
And?
I have to prepare the question. On the column list I have four is missing middle, five is SDC, I have it listed.
Oh, well, the one I have, I, is not that.
So Mr. Dean, we talked about.
So it's, yeah, so we got that straight now? Okay. All, all those in favor by saying aye?
Prepare the question before I pass my vote.
Okay.
One, two, I want to pass.
Okay. Items one, two, three, and five. And I can state it again.
Thank you. I have to prepare the question.
Okay. Okay. And five. So all those in favor, let me recast the motion again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So all those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. And back to the couple of those.
Thank you.
Yay, happy New Year!
We now move to the resolution. Resolution to Act 3419, this is a resolution including a marketing license agreement with Utility Service Partners, private label fee, and authorizing city managers to modify execution of duty. And we have presenting this to Jay Harris and?
Dennis Lyon, from Service Line Warranties of America.
I was actually going to hand out this before we.
Good evening, Mayor Andrews, City Council Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. Tonight, you have before you a proposal for a service line warranty for private laterals. So Newberg has about 7,000 water services, also 7,000 sewer laterals, and they're all of differing age and material type. The city currently maintains the right-of-way portion of those laterals and, and services. The private portion, which starts at the property line, though, is the homeowner's Many of the homeowner's lines are nearing the end of the service life. Concrete pipe, clay pipe, cast iron lines. We're an older city, so we have a huge variation. There's even the stuff called Orangeburg, and it's basically tar paper, thick tar paper wrapped up, and it's getting squashed. Those are getting a little fewer and farther apart.
Basically, layers of laminated tar paper.
Yeah, very poor piping material. A few months ago, the city manager and was introduced at a National League of Cities Conference to the Service Line Warranties of America Company, and began this conversation. So the Service Line Warranties of America wants to offer a warranty to property owners. We would enter a marketing license agreement, and the example of the agreements here in the resolution this evening. And basically, they would do all the mailings and all that. They would cite our name on the mailings, and they, I'm assuming you cite the National League of Cities. Dennis is going to get into more in a minute. There's no cost for the city to offer this program. There is an option where the monthly payments made by the homeowners, if they purchase a warranty on their own accord, some of that could go back to the city again. I speak of that in the resolution. I, I don't think that's a good idea, to charge them for services, that type of services of us. So offering in-home piping, which you have, and exterior yard piping warranties to the property owners, could reduce costs to homeowners. It could reduce water bills, leaky pipes, right? We have an INI problem also, could reduce our inflow into our system. We do have some broken laterals in the city where the people just don't have the money to fix them too, which is not good. You don't want raw sewer backing up in your house and your yard. And so Dennis Lyons here, he flew in from Pittsburgh, and came a long ways, and he's probably getting tired, because it's getting a little late for him. But he has a presentation. Actually, Sue, I got you that PowerPoint some time ago. Do you still have that by chance? It's also in the council packet. I didn't resend it. Okay. Okay.
That's better.
Good. So Dennis is here to talk about their program and what they do, and how many cities they do this for.
Okay.
Just a couple, right?
Just a few, yeah. Thank you very much. And thank you, Counsel. I appreciate the invitation to be able to present the program today. My name is Dennis Lyon. I work for a company called Utility Service Partners, which is a home-serv company. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, very good. I'm sorry. So again, I work for a company called Utility Service Partners, which is a home-serv company, and we're the administrator of the National League of Cities Service Line Program, which is the only program that is endorsed by the National League of Cities. Excuse me. Currently, we have over 500 city partners in North America that we're working with to offer this program. As, as Mr. Harris mentioned, this program offers homeowners As, as Mr. Harris mentioned, this program offers homeowners the opportunity to voluntarily participate in coverage for their external water line, the external sewer line, and their in-home plumbing. It's a program that we provide as a complete turnkey approach for the city. So we handle all aspects, the marketing, the billing, the claims, and the customer service. No public funds are used in the marketing of the program. It doesn't cost the city anything to participate in the program. And as Mr. Harris mentioned, there is a revenue component that the city could participate in as well. Excuse me. How this came about is our company actually has been offering this type of coverage for about 15 years. And the National League of Cities, you know, knew that there's an issue with aging infrastructure across the United States. Communities just like yours have, have problems. You're doing your best to maintain and upgrade the public side, but it's the private side that gets forgotten in this process. And a lot of homeowners don't realize that those private lines are their responsibility. So usually when they have an issue, their first call is to the city. Hey, there's something going on with my water line or my sewer line. And it costs the city money to send somebody out just to look at that issue and say, hey, you know, that's your problem. So not only does it cost the city money, but now you're delivering bad news to this homeowner that this is your problem to deal with on your own. Go find a contractor on your own, you know, pay for this on your own because your homeowner's insurance doesn't cover it, the city doesn't cover it either. So the National League of Cities wanted to make a program like this available across the United States. They started this vetting process, and we were the company that they chose to administer this program. You don't have to be a member of the National League of Cities to participate. Excuse me. And as I said, we've been, been, our, we've been partnered with the National League of Cities, I should say, had their endorsement since about 2010 now. The way I would look at this from a vetting process is we've been vetted by the National League of Cities and received their endorsement. There are also over 500 local governments that have vetted and approved this program as well, and also some various state leagues. So what we do is we partner with you to educate your homeowners as to what their responsibilities are for these lateral service lines. We do that strictly by a direct mail, so there aren't any concerns about telemarketers or individuals going door-to-door to, to try to, you know, get enrollments into the program. Everything is completely voluntary. Nobody is automatically enrolled. They have to choose to opt in. We do a maximum of three mail campaigns per year, so you don't have to be concerned about your residents being overwhelmed with direct mail either. We partner with you to craft a message that we're sending to these homeowners to inform them as to, you know, what their responsibilities are and also explain to them that this is something that's optional, that they can participate in. We make it very clear in the communications that we send to them that this program is completely voluntary to them. All three of the options available to them are completely separate, so they can choose any combination that they would like. And then we make it very clear to them that this is a program that's offered through a private company with a partnership from the city, not from the city itself. To get into that coverage a little bit, one of the, the things that we do when we partner with the city is we want to make sure that we've tailored that coverage specifically to what your homeowners are responsible for. Issues that you run into with other companies that provide this type of services, they don't work with the city, they just mail direct to consumer, and that's where you run into issues where something that they think would be covered isn't necessarily covered because they haven't coordinated that with the city to make sure that, that, you know, those responsibilities are, are clearly defined in their terms of, of service. Excuse me. When we're educating those homeowners as to what their responsibilities are, again, we're making them aware of what the coverage entails. So I'm going to get into that a little bit. The water and the, oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
You did a good job in the meantime.
Well, I've been through this a few times. One of the things that I would like to point out, I forgot about this part here, if you go to that last bullet point, 80% of respondents, this is a recent Harris poll that our, our company commissioned, and we surveyed 2,000 adults, 80, 80% of respondents either strongly or somewhat agreed with the statement that local community government should be responsible for at least educating homeowners about their external water lines on their property that aren't covered by their homeowner's insurance or, or the city or the town or the local utility union. Which I think is pretty significant, you know, they, they just at least want the city to let them know, this is your responsibility. I've gone through some of this as far as our experience and reputation, how long we've been offering these types of, of services and our partnership with the National League of Cities. Excuse me. Been through some of this. You know, this is just some information on the American Society of Civil Engineers. They've basically graded the national public infrastructure a D-plus. There's over 850 water main breaks every day across the United States. And down below, you can see some estimates on, on what you're looking at from the public side as to this, addressing this issue. Excuse me. Just some of the challenges for homeowners, you know, the lateral lines are subjected to the same elements that public lines are, ground shifting, temperatures fluctuating, tree root penetration, and so on. Those lines are out of sight, out of mind, so again, most people don't realize that they're, they're issue. Failed lines, lots of water wasted, sewers backup, environmental hazards, what have you. And then again, the common homeowner misconception is that, you know, the lines are, are covered by the city maintenance crew or, you know, repairs are covered by the homeowner's insurance. Just some information that, that we've conducted from previous surveys about how homeowners just aren't prepared for these types of, of emergencies when they do occur. You know, one in five households are putting off repairs because they just don't have the money. Excuse me. So what we do is, you know, we basically provide peace of mind for those individuals who, who choose to participate in this program. What it is that we do for them is when they have an issue, they call us. We have two United States-based call centers. One is in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the other's in Chattanooga, Tennessee. They're available to them 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days out of the year. When they call us with an issue, we dispatch a local area licensed contractor to handle these repairs. And that's one of the things that I really want to emphasize is our focus is on keeping the money within your local economy. So when an individual has an issue and they call us with a problem, when that contractor makes that repair for that individual, excuse me, when we pay that contractor, that money is staying in your local economy. So it's helping your economy by offering this. The other reason we use local licensed contractors is because they should know all the local codes and ordinances and which permits they need to pull in order to make those repairs. As for selecting those contractors, as a city, you can be involved in that process if you like. Some cities do have lists of preferred contractors that they know meet all the standards to be able to make these types of repairs. If not, we have a vetting procedure to find those contractors. So we do things like, we make sure that they're licensed, that they're insured, that they're bonded, that they have no open complaints with the Better Business Bureau, that they have all the necessary equipment to make these types of repairs. And then we go a step further, and we administer background checks and drug screens on individuals as well, because we want to make sure that your residents are comfortable if these folks come to their home to make these repairs. We have maintained the last 10 years running a customer satisfaction rating of 95%. We have a 97% claims approval rating of those 3% of claims that aren't pursued, or, or, excuse me, approved, but typically folks that just haven't paid us for their coverage. We don't do long-term contracts with your residents, so everything is month-to-month. Nobody gets locked into anything long-term that they don't want to be a part of. We also don't do pre-inspections of homes. So when a resident signs up for the coverage after a 30-day waiting period, their coverage takes effect. So there's nobody that's going to come out to their home and look around and see if they have any issues before they're approved for recovery. And there's different ways that they can enroll. They can respond to the mailing, they can call in, they can go to the website and sign up as well. The coverage, what that includes, and I'm going to go over the water and sewer because they're set up pretty similarly. They get up to $8,500 per repair incident. And that's one of the things that differentiates us from other companies is our coverage is on a per-incident basis. So there are no service fees, there are no deductibles, there's no annual limit, there's no lifetime limit, there's no limit to the number of service calls that they can have or incidents that they can have in a calendar year. And that coverage does also include public street and sidewalk cutting if necessary. And I should, I should mention that, excuse me, on the water and sewer line, I mean, that covers everything, broken la, cracked, leaking pipe, tree root penetration, thawing of frozen external water lines, really any type of issue that they have that's on their portion of the line. On the in-home plumbing coverage, this covers everything from the point of entry to the home throughout the household. There they get up to $3,000 of coverage per repair incident, including even repair, or, repair of clogged toilets. So again, broken, broken, leaked or, leaking or, or cracked pipes, anything that's under a basement floor or embedded in a concrete slab even. Same thing, no annual or lifetime limits, no deductibles, no service fees, anything like that. And the reason we set our coverage up this way is we don't even want just a nominal service fee to deter someone from having their issue addressed. So what we've found is that folks that participate in our coverage are much more proactive in getting their issues resolved, which is good for everybody. It's good for the homeowner, but it's also good for the city because, you know, when there are issues on the private side, oftentimes that can become a problem on the public side. So we help with that. What we ask for, what the city's role is in this partnership, and, and I believe Mr. Harris addressed this as well, is the use of the city logo and a, an official signature on the marketing material. Because of that, we give the city complete review and approval of anything that we send out before it's mailed, so you have an input on that message to the residents. Once it's approved, we provide the mailing date to you as well, so you'll know when it is the residents are going to be receiving that coverage. We are the only company that will not mail without a partnership with the city and without the city's approval of that marketing material before it's ever sent out. And I mentioned some of these other, other points previously, so I won't go over those again. The reason we utilize this partnership method is it allows us to offer the best possible benefits that we can at the lowest rate that we can, simply due to economic.